All right, 7:00 PM. Call tonight's meeting to order. Suzy, can you call the board, please?
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion to approve the consent agenda tonight.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield. Councilmember Canfield. Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion, items not on the agenda, just got to raise your hand and we will call on you. You'll need your name and your address.
Star nine, or if you're on the phone, or raise your hand.
If anybody, Mike, I don't have anybody.
Nope, I don't see. Oh, wait a minute. No, I do have one. I'm sorry.
Yep, Trevor.
All right, so, okay, so my name is Trevor Workman. I'm the pastor of the Lowell Church of the Nazarene at 201 North Washington Street. Do you need my address as well?
I think the church address is fine.
Yeah.
So I had a question about the sound ordinance, and I'll pull up an email that I received from Sue about a month ago or so. I had asked about the sound ordinances because we, to make a long story short, we held an outdoor service for our church and got a complaint from a neighbor that we were too loud. So I was asking if we needed a permit for these services. She said we didn't need a permit, but we did need to comply with the local ordinance, which is, I don't know the exact number of the ordinance, but it is on sound amplifiers. So I had a couple of questions about it, and I'm really looking for two things. One, if we can potentially look at restructuring or rewriting this ordinance, or if we can get a special exemption based on some of the things that are, that are part of it. So let me just outline my concerns with it, if you don't mind. The first one is that section B of the ordinance says, "Operations are permitted each day except on Sundays and legal holidays, and no operation shall be authorized. Forbidden hours are between 9:00 and 5:00 PM." We're a church and we do things on Sunday mornings, so that, that's one issue with it. Another one is section D, "Sound shall not originate within 100 yards of schools or churches." Again, we're a church, so that's, in order to comply with this, we cannot do any sort of outdoor services. Then the biggest one, those ones, I understand that because we're a church, I feel like that's kind of unwritten agreement type of thing, but this is the, the one that has a real issue. Section E, it says, "The volume of, of the sound shall be controlled that it will not be audible for a distance in excess of 100 feet from the sound amplifying equipment, and so that the volume is not reasonably loud, raucous, loud, raucous, jarring, disturbing, or nuisance to persons within the area." So the issue with that is that it is not a very far distance. I was on the phone earlier today with, with the police officer. I don't remember his name. I thought the police department was, were the ones to help me out with it. They actually told me to, to attend this meeting tonight. So he agreed with me that 100 feet is not quite, it's not very far. And he had said that this ordinance was written in 1971. I, I wasn't around then. I'm only 25 years old, but I imagine the sound amplifying equipment wasn't as good as it is today, and that 100 feet might have been, I don't know, reasonably far then, but right now, 100 feet doesn't even exceed our working lot. While we're trying to social distance and to do everything that we need to do in order to hold a church service or any type of other event, 100 feet, in order to get it to only go 100 feet, it'd have to be very, very quiet. And so I'm just wondering if there's one of two things, if we could restructure this ordinance to make it a little bit more reasonable for 2020, or if, if our church could get a special exemption, because with the recent executive order where we can only have 10 people in a building at one time, we're either looking at doing outdoor services or online, and nobody likes the online option. So I'd really like to, to discuss that, if you don't mind.
Sure, Mike?
Yeah, I know Jessica and I did look into this ordinance, and we did, we did discuss this with him. So I, I think what we could do is maybe we could come back and review, look at this ordinance at a later date, maybe the next meeting, and hopefully we have better information, and maybe there are, I mean, this ordinance is 50 years old, so maybe there is a need to revisit this.
Well, it's also a little different because they don't have an indoor option right now.
Correct.
So it, I mean, if that's something you want to work with him on,
Yeah.
I think that would be the way to go. I don't, I mean, I don't want to commit to anything right now, but it'd be nice if we could get that discussion started.
Yeah, I don't think the, I don't think the intent was ever to restrict them from doing this, but, but, but the noise is an issue.
There is a church service on the Riverwalk and has been for a long time on Sundays.
Right. Yeah, and I've never had any complaints about that.
Trevor, if you just want to follow, I see you're muted again, but if you just want to follow up with Mike, he'd be the one you'd want to work with on that. So, uh, I appreciate it. And then, looks like Eric's got his hand up, too.
Yep, we got one more. Hang on, let me unmute him. Okay.
Barely hear you, Eric.
Uh, yes, Eric, Eric, Marcus, 215 West Main.
Yeah, I can't hear. Can anybody hear?
Well, I heard 215 West Main, Eric.
Sounds like he's going to call back, Mayor.
That's fine. We can just put him in towards the end of the meeting there.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, nobody else? Is there, Mike, you don't have anybody else, do you?
No, I do not.
All right, uh, let's go to old business, the MERS Actuarial. Mike?
Yes, I have, um, Mike Overly from MERS. He's our representative. He's here tonight to give you our annual actuarial valuation update. I'm putting it on the screen right now, so we have it. And I'll, I'll forward over to Mike, and he can, he can walk you through this and answer any questions you may have. There we go. There we go. Mike, you there? Man, you, Mike, I asked you to unmute, so you should be on.
There we go. Yep. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I was having some issues there. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having me out. Appreciate the opportunity. Hopefully you have this, this information here ahead of time, and Mike was gracious enough to put it on the screen, so just want to keep it brief. I know we've had a couple of opportunities here in the last six to eight months to get together and talk through things. So what I want, the information I wanted to share with you tonight is an update on the cities, which includes Lowell Light and Power, the status of your defined benefit pension plan, excuse me, as of December 31st, 2019. So this is just some summary information that I thought might be useful based on the key points. And then Mike also included in the packet the actual full 2019 report, which is many, many pages, lots more detail, and I'm, and I'm glad to touch base on anything on that, but I really wanted to just give you some, some key takeaways for the purposes of this meeting. So as I had mentioned previously, you know, the, the city's been a member of MERS for, for many, many years, and we are governed by a nine-member board. That's important because the board is elected by the MERS membership, so the city has a say, has a vote in terms of who sits on that board, and it's, and it's a pretty diverse governance model in the fact that we have officer members, which are individuals from local governments that have an administrative role, a leadership role. We have employee members, so individuals who do not have a management-type role at their local government, as well as we have two appointed investment experts and one appointed retiree member, so an individual who's drawing a pension from the system. So among those nine members, we're trying to, you know, cover all of the bases and make sure everything is vetted thoroughly. So if we can move to, to page three here, Mike, or the, just the, the next page. So with your defined benefit plan, as we had discussed previously, you know, this is a lifetime benefit. It's the traditional pension. You cannot outlive this benefit. So the key piece with a defined benefit plan is that we're trying to put money aside in order to pay a promised lifetime benefit. So in the city's case, the city makes a contribution, employees make contributions to the plan. Those funds come over to MERS. MERS is represented by the piggy bank here, and then all of the city's funds, along with Light and Power, along with 800 other local governments across the state of Michigan, all that money gets invested. The portfolio is about $11 billion, and so large economies the scale that go to market, and all three factors or inputs is what provides the, the pension benefit. So the highlighted table five at the bottom of page three just shows you the sort of money in, money out, just to give you a feel for the cash flow, if you will. So we can see that in calendar year 2019, about a little under $500,000 was required to be contributed. Again, this is Light and Power and the city. The city is sort of the umbrella for, for both plans. There was additional contributions made. You can see how much employees contributed. You can see what investment income brought to the table in 2019, and then you can see benefit payments to the tune of over $920,000. So I think that's just important to see that you can sort of see the evolution of the plan, the aging of the plan from the standpoint that benefit payments have increased every year for the 11 years that are shown on that chart. So just wanted to give you a feel for, for money in and money out, and also really the value that investment income brings, brings to the plan. I'll stop right there and just see if there's any questions, or, Mike, are you monitoring for, for questions there?
Yeah, if there's something that pops up, I'll be able to let, let you know.
Okay, thank you. I'm on my iPad. I couldn't get my regular computer working, so it's a little different interface. So if you could go to the next page, that would be awesome. So the, so the goal with, with all pension plans is to ensure that the promise, which is the lifetime pension, which represents a liability for the city. The liability is on one side of the equation, and on the other side of the equation are the assets. So we want to ensure that over time that the liability and the assets are in balance, meaning we've sent us, set aside enough money to pay for those pension benefits. So that's the goal, full funding or 100% funding. We're not in that spot at this particular point in time. Like, if you go to next page. So right now, we are in what is called an unfunded situation, or there is the presence of unfunded liability. So that basically means that liability, as I just mentioned, represents the promise that represents, in, in real dollars, you can see the, the number here under where it says "Actuarial accrued liability," and you can see the total. I highlighted the city's portion, and then you can see the collective for both the city and Light and Power. That represents the value of time earned for employees of Light and Power, employees of the city. It's the estimated dollar value of their collective benefit. So that's for active employees, current retirees of both entities, as well as vested former members of both entities. So those are folks that have worked enough time for either city or light power, but they just haven't, they're not old enough to begin drawing from the plan yet. So there's a liability there. That liability outweighs, or is larger than the assets that are currently set in the plan, and you can see the assets for each entity under the valuation assets column there on table six. So the city is about 60.2% funded as of December 31st, 2019, and then collectively, when we roll in Light and Power, we're at about 59.7. So what does that mean? 59.7, 60.2? Another way of looking that, looking at that, excuse me, is saying that as of that moment in time, December 31st, for the city specifically, Division 10 General, which is highlighted there, there was about 60.2 cents on hand in the plan for every dollar that is promised specifically to current city retirees and future city retirees. In the future, city retirees is an important piece. So we do ultimately have to bring those scales in balance. We ultimately have to get the plan to 100%. Very similar to what you see with Light and Power's hybrid plan, the HA that you see there, and you see it's a little bit more than 100%. So that's where we need to get Light and Power and the city over time. It's going to take about 19 years on the long end. It could be sooner, but it's going to take about 19 years to get to that position, but we need those scales to get into balance. But right now, we're at 60%. Obviously, we'd like it to be, you know, much higher, and in a perfect world, everybody would be 100% or more right now. But from a, from a cash flow perspective, the city has retirees, but the city also has active employees. And the active employees span an age range, so you've got, you know, younger-ish active employees, and then you have older active employees. So not everybody is going to ride off into the sunset tomorrow, and even if they, everyone was the same age and was going to retire right now, we still wouldn't need to be fully funded because everyone will get one year of payment at a time. So we're setting aside money for an anticipated lifetime, so all the money doesn't need to be paid in right now, but we do need to get to that fully funded position over time. And again, that timeframe is about 19 years. If you could go to page six, Mike.
Yep.
So again, at a, at a high level, the actuarial, the full actuarial report that, that you have in your packet there is, is a very in-depth analysis of, of the plan as calculated by Gabriel Roder Smith, who is MERS consulting actuary. So I am not an actuary, but I've worked with him now for, for over 15 years. So some days, I think I, I feel like an actuary, and most days I, I eat humble pie when I, when I talk to the actuaries. But, but in a nutshell, what the actuaries are trying to do, and what they do do for every year when, when we put out these reports. So again, this is the 2019 report. It came out in the summer of 2020, just a couple of months ago, and then it shows the contribution rates for the city and for Light and Power that go into effect July of 2021. So there's always a, a time delay in terms of when the rates go into effect. Specifically, what they do is look at the people in each of the plans. So they look at Light and Power's plan, which is closed. They look at the, the general employee plan for the city, and they look at the hybrid plan for Light and Power. Who are the men and women in the plan? What is the unique demographic makeup of that group? They look at the plan provisions, so things like benefit multiplier, vesting period, how much folks are paying in, what makes your plan unique, the specific plan provisions. They look at how much money is already put into the plan, so the, the cash dollars in the plan, and then they make a whole series of assumptions about what they expect to happen to everything associated with that plan. So the assumptions fall into two categories. There's demographic assumptions, which are assumptions that apply to people, and then there's economic assumptions, and those are the assumptions that apply to the dollars. So we expect that the money is going to grow over time. We expect that inflation will be at a certain level. For people, we expect that people generally will live a cer, till a certain age. We expect that when an individual is eligible to retire, he or she will, like, some folks will retire soon as they're eligible, but not everybody. We, we look at what we expect pay raises to be like over a working lifetime. What is the chance of a disability or, or something like that taking place? So lots of different assumptions, and when we boil it all down, we say, okay, if we have this plan with these men and women in the plan that has these planned details, and there's this much money in it already, we're going to promise a certain dollar amount in the future. How much more money do we need to set aside each year in order to fulfill that promise? And the biggest piece with actuarial assumptions is that they are assumptions. They are based on data. They look at data for at least the last five years back, as well as try to project out what they anticipate to happen in the for, in, in the future. But they, it is not an exact science, and, and the assumptions never come, you know, they're never exactly spot on. They can be a little high, they can be a little low, and that's just the nature of, of how the pension works and, and assumptions specifically, but you want the assumptions based on reality as much as possible, and so the assumptions are always being looked at to ensure that they are based in reality, and you don't get something that becomes an outlier. Like, if you could flip to page seven, then I can, I can talk a little bit more. Again, so when I looked at, when I met with the city council last year, we, we talked about an overview of the plan. At that point in time, the city was at a 63% funded position. And if you recall, just here a moment ago, I had mentioned the city is at a 60% funded position. So there's really two main factors with a lot of detail lying underneath, but the, but the two primary drivers for the reason that the funding level was 63% at the end of 2018, and then declined to 60% at the end of 2019 are listed here on page seven. So the first one, and this one was significant, is what we call an economic assumption change. So I mentioned, this is, this is one of the, the two assumption categories, economic and demographic. And early last year, well, about a year and a half ago now, the MERS elected board has continued to review the most critical economic rate of assumption, which is the investment rate of return. And this basically is what is the return that we expect that $11 billion portfolio to grow at over time, and considering time is a long-term investment horizon. So, so MERS has been around since 1946. Up until 2015, MERS had historically set the long-term investment rate of return assumption at 8%. And historically, over a 25, 30-year timeframe, we have met that 8% rate of return and exceeded that 8% return. Now, the last 10 years have been more interesting, and this year is a, is a great example, I hate to say that, of investment market volatility and, and the joys of the stock market, the global investment market. The last few years have had a lot of ups and downs, and because of some of the, these ups and downs, there's a high level of concern, not only by MERS board, but really pension plans, public and private across the United States. There's concern that order, in order to achieve those higher rates of return over the long haul, there's a need to take more risk, and inherently actuaries try to minimize risk, and there's concern that risk would have to be taken at a higher level. You know, you can win big, but you can lose big. So in order to make things more manageable, and what we felt like was a, was a solid level of risk reward, the MERS board has lowered the long-term investment rate of return five years ago at 8%. It dropped to 7.75. This year, it dropped from 7.75 to 7.35. So that's the information that's noted in the top of page seven. The impact of that, basically, in a nutshell, is if you go back to that piggy bank page, you remember that employees put in money, the city puts in money, and investment returns bring in the money. That's the three sources of revenue or of money for an individual's pension. So if we're lowering the investment rate of return assumption from 7.75 to 7.35, we're basically saying, hey, we're expecting a little bit less, even though it's only 4 tenths of a percent. It's 4 tenths of a percent over many, many years. We're expecting investments to bring a little bit less to the table. And if that's the case, then one or both of the other two parties, that being the city or the employee, then has to make up the difference, if you will. It's a sort of a three-pronged attack. So when that rate lowers, it has an impact on the plan. It lowers funding level, and it decreases the level that assets are anticipated to grow in the future. So that is impactful. And then the second major piece that impacted the city's plan specifically in 2019 was number of retirements. So that's under part two there. I included information from table three. The yellow highlighted information is data specifically for the city. As of the end of 2019, you'll notice 19 active employees with about a $1.2 million payroll, vested former employees, three with about 62,000. That was actually a little less than what it was before, but we still had three employees in 2018. And then retirees went from 21 to 23, and we went up by about 60,000. So those two new retirees drawing around 63, 64, 65,000 dollars, am I doing, I'm sorry, 35,000. I'm doing bad math there. So we had a couple of retirements in the plan. So so our, our scales have, have tipped a little bit. If you, if you look at the, at the bottom of the page, that table three, you'll notice that our active employee levels are about the same. The invested employees, this is the bold information at the bottom of table three, the vested former employees are at, are still at eight. And then our retirees and beneficiaries climb from 36 to 38, and those, again, happen to be retirees of the city in calendar year 2019. So so a few more folks in payout status now, if you will, but we have status quo in terms of the number of active employees who are paying into the plan. So that has a little bit of an impact on the plan as well. Those are the two major drivers of the change from 2018 to 2019. I know the council and, and Mike is in, in process and reviewing a number of, of plan change considerations and things like that. So changes, anything that might be adopted in the future would change these, you know, these numbers on a moving forward, and those types of changes can also have an impact on the funded level of the plan. The other key piece of information that I just wanted to share with council here tonight is on page eight. Mike, if you could jump to, to that one, and this is really my, my last piece, is this is sort of, um, just an FYI sort of heads-up type, type information. I had mentioned again that, that the actuaries have two sets of assumptions, economic and demographic, and they're constantly, the actuaries, our senior management and our board are looking at the assumptions all the time. And so there's been an evolution in, in all of these assumptions over the course of the years, but there's been a more rapid evolution in the last few years. So as we just saw, the, excuse me, the economic assumptions changed. We now have an investment rate of return at 7.35%. In the report that the city will get next year, which will be the calendar year 2020 report, that report will reflect demographic assumption changes, so assumptions affecting the people. So again, those are things like life expectancy, rates of retirement, when somebody retires, disability, things like that. In a nutshell, we're basically expecting, probably not a surprise, you know, folks are living even a little bit longer than what we had anticipated before. Good thing for the participants, but from a plan standpoint, when you're promising a lifetime benefit, if you're living longer, you're getting paid longer. If you're getting paid longer, the liabilities of the plan increase, and therefore it, it has an impact. So my purpose for showing this table here on page eight, specifically the highlighted information, this is saying, okay, we delivered a 2019 report to you, and we mentioned that we're at 60%. That's the numbers that you see in the right-hand column of this table. 60% overall between the city and Light and Power. Total contributions on a monthly basis is about 57,700. That's an estimate based on what payroll was at the end of last year. Next year, we're changing these demographic assumptions, anticipating folks are going to live a little bit longer. If, and this is, this is only an if, if we had made those changes this year and put them into effect right now, the impact on the plan would be shown what's highlighted in yellow in middle. So remember, it's longer payments, longer lifetimes, increases- So remember it's longer payments, longer lifetimes, increases the liability, the scales tip a little bit. And the net impact of that would be a change from 60% funded to a 58% funded position. And with the corresponding decline in funding level, the contribution in total from city and light and power is estimated to go up to the tune of about $3,000 a month. So the easiest thing I can say about this, this chart is the change of the demographic assumptions will have an impact on the plan. But as referenced in that chart that we saw earlier with the gears, there's a lot of moving pieces that go into determining what the cost of a defined benefit plan is in any given year. So isolating just this demographic assumption change, the net impact is that it will push plan costs up and lower the funding level. All of that being said, we know that experience in other areas will take place. The investment market, whether it's a gain or a loss, will play a significant impact on that as well as what happens at the city. You know, anybody who leaves, retires, anybody hired in, plan changes, all of those things can have an impact on the plan as well. And when we look at the, the pension plan, just from the most holistically, you know, viewpoint possible, if you go to the scales, I love the scales, you know, picture. Certain things add to liability, certain things take away liability. Certain things add to the assets, certain other things take away from the assets. And every year when we look at how the system was and performed, the system's experience, the city's experience, Light Power's experience, we, we do all those calculations and we see where the scales land. So at this point, it's difficult to say exactly where will the city be in the report that comes out next summer. But we can say with confidence that based on this one action of demographic assumptions changing, that that alone will add to the liability and have an impact on the plan. It's just hard to say what's the net outcome of that. So when we get the report next summer, we'll know, we'll be able to compare, see how things panned out, see how close the estimate was. A lot of that'll depend on this year too, how the investment market performs. And it's been, it's been an interesting year to, to say the least. I'm glad that we're in August, we've come a long way from where we were back in March and April. We still have a long way to go, so we will see how things go in that department. But those were the main pieces I wanted to share with the board here. I wanted to keep my comments under 20 minutes and hopefully I achieved that. If not, I was, I was close. So I will stop there and, and ask if there are questions pertaining to that or to the, to the full report, if you had an opportunity to review that.
I have a question for the full report under the unfunded liability of 6.7 million. You said there's about 19 years that we were to pay that off. I just did a quick math at 20 years. I don't know how we come up with $335,000 a year over the 20 years just to make up 6.7 million. Plus the fact that during those 20 years, we're going to continue to fall behind the plan because we don't have it. So this is probably more to Mr. Mike Burns and that part of it. How do we make that up, Mike? And maybe you don't give me the answer tonight, but let, let, give it, let me know on the road.
What I'm looking at obviously is we've obviously settled two, we've already settled one employment contract where they're going to be bridging their future pension down from a 2.5% to a 2.0 multiplier. So that's going to, that's going to reduce liability going forward. The other thing that we are, that they've agreed to do and that, and that the police union has agreed to do is all new hires will go to a defined contribution plan. So they will not be in this pension plan. So we aren't going to be creating any future liability for them. Doing those two things, if we would have just kept, if we wouldn't have bridged down and if we wouldn't have bridged down, our liability, it would have caused the, it'll cause a massive acceleration in our payments in addition to what we pay now to fund the unfunded liability. That helps control it a little bit annually. The other thing I'm looking at doing is something that MERS will allow us to do, but I would want to do this once we resolve all of our labor issues. Is I would like to basically, best, best way to explain it is to re-amortarize that 20-year unfunded payment or that 19 years. Because my concern is years 19, years 17, 18, 19, we're playing anywhere between 850 to $900,000 a year in, in our revenue just to the pension liability, which that is roughly almost a third of our total general fund revenue. So what I'm trying to hopefully do is re-amortarize that. So maybe those payments in the out years aren't as bad and we're, we're going to be able to tackle our unfunded liabilities. The good, the good news is if you look at our projections going forward, even with what's right now, without doing anything, you're going to start in the next few years. Even though we're going to be baking more in payments, you're going to start seeing that unfunded liability start coming up. So we're, we've went from 63 to 60 this year and next year we'll probably go to 58. What you're going to see in about the next three to five years, you're now going to start seeing that percentage slowly creep up. So that is, that is one of the, that is one of the positive things about that. But this, these are the things that I've been trying, obviously I still have an, we still have an open contract we're working on. And, but these are the things I'm looking at trying to do to try and resolve this issue.
Mike, does, does it go up because of the defined contribution from employees?
You mean the, you mean the, you mean the unfunded liability, you mean the funded liability? It goes up because we'll actually be contributing more towards the unfunded liability component.
And that comes from the city or from the employee?
Well, it, it comes between both because the employee, the employee contributes, but the employee, the employee contributes 7% of their pay at this time. And then, and then the city right now, I believe we're about 26% of payroll goes towards it right now. So that 26, it's going to go up over time. But the employees will always be contributing 7%. Well, as of right now.
Michael, a couple of questions. Going back to your initial, it's in the complete report, but in the last 10 years from 2009 to 2019, we went from being 76, 76% funded to 60% funded. These changes of going from 8% to 7.75% are really not that significant for us to lose that major of, of funding. Are we acting way too slowly here? How can we lose 16% and drop that much in that amount?
Yeah, no, Commissioner, that's, that's a good question and I, I, I get it. It's, it's, it's a very fair question. So I'll take the, the second part, second part first. The assumptions, they, they do play a significant impact in it, but they are the changes and the, the decrease in some of those assumptions becoming more conservative are a result of the experience that we've seen, especially over the last 12 years, you know, back to, to 2008. So two things I want to hit on that. One, you mentioned, you know, are, are we going a little slower? I, I've, I've heard that, that feedback a lot and it's a, it's a very, this is my opinion on this, but from being involved in the discussions, it's a very delicate balance. You know, looking at the data where we're, you know, how we've performed over time and as a long-term investor, again, looking at decades, what's the outlook expected to be? But then you look at 2008 and that year MERS lost 25%. But then there was a nice rebound, our target was 8% that year. And so that's a 33% miss. Obviously that was a, that was a, that was a bad year, to, to say the least. There was also some, some good years rebounding, you know, think some of the stimulus stuff back in 2009, 2010. But there's even been volatility, you know, in the last two or three years. So the board has had a continuing challenge as the state of Michigan has, as most public pension plans have, of wanting to react, but not wanting to overreact. And to give you, and, and I, I don't say that to, to try to sound funny with my words at all. If you look at this page eight here, the, the page that Mike currently has up on the screen, there's another column that is not highlighted and it says, lower future annual returns. And you see a 5.35% investment rate return assumption. So obviously that's much more conservative than the number that's currently in place at 7.35%. And that's sort of put in there as a, just a, a what-if type scenario. So from the standpoint, you say, yeah, you know, MERS, you've declined from eight to 7.75% down to 7.35%, but is that far enough? You know, again, not to try and sound funny, time will tell. I can say when our board made two changes to this in the last five years, they would be thrilled if they never had to address this issue again. You know, that, that the assumption was spot on and they, and they hit the mark and they were, they were good for it. Is that, is that going to be the case? Again, you know, time will tell. The purpose for this chart in here is to show, well, what would it look like if we said, you know what? We just really need to go a lot more conservative than where we are right now on that assumption. And so looking at that lower future annual returns column, which uses calculations based on a 5.35% assumption, you can see the impact that that has on the funded ratio for the city and, and Light and Power as well as the contributions. So there's really, again, it's my word, sort of a balance that the, that the board has to, has to make when they say, okay, well, what level of risk are we comfortable with in terms of the entire portfolio? And by lowering it, you know, I, I would argue becoming more conservative is, is, is a good thing. But you don't want to go too far because there's a balance of, you know, if you set that assumption very low to where you can just beat it every single year, you're pushing plan contributions up really high in the short term. So you don't want to, you know, go too low, but you don't want to be pie in the sky either. So that's put in there for that reason. But no, but the other reason is it's, it's related to this, well, twofold. You know, the decline in funding level. One, the plan has matured over time. So we've been in an underfunded situation, even when we were at 75%. And we've had more retirements, you know, more folks drawing on the plan as evidenced on that page that you saw earlier with the cash inflows and the cash outflows. And so when a plan is not in a fully funded position and it continues to experience retirements, each one of those retirements, the larger it is, the more impact it has. You're moving more people into this payout status. And generally speaking, either maintaining or not having the same level of active employees who are paying into the plan. So you have a, a more water going out than going in. And investment returns, again, it's all investment returns have really been again volatile in the last 10 to 12 years in particular. And, and by volatile, that's recognized, it's the nature of investment returns. And, and I didn't put this in the presentation. But in order to, to try to counteract that, the volatile nature, actuaries employ another tech, an actuarial technique that they call smoothing. Smoothing is sort of like averaging. So investment returns are smoothed or averaged out over a period of time. And the purpose of doing that is to, to maximize or, or, or just spread out the impacts, whether they're good or bad, I'll say, so that you don't get walloped in a, in a year that you have a negative 25% return. But conversely, you don't have a situation where you hardly have to contribute anything in a year where you have a really high investment rate of return. So averaging the returns out, it used to be averaged over a 10-year period of time. It is now averaged out over a five-year period of time. But at the end of 2019, and specifically just as, as evidence of this, this market volatility, at the end of 2019, our smoothed or averaged rate of return was 4.7% at the end of that particular year. So 4.7% is the rate that the, that the assets grew on an actuarial basis averaged out over a five-year timeframe. That is less obviously than the 7.35% rate of return that is in effect right now. And anytime the real results, in this case, the 4.7% is less than what the assumption is, the 7.35%, that means that the money didn't grow on average at the level that we anticipated it to grow. And if that didn't happen, that immediately translates into an unfunded liability. And as much as it pains me to say this, if you see, I, I, I long sometimes for the good old days because I, I started back at MERS in, in 2005. And if you're looking at that historical chart there, which is table seven in the full report, you can see back in '05, '06, '07, everything was on the upswing. The average rates of return were above what the assumptions were and it was, it was a very different time. It feels like a complete generation ago. Since 2008, you see some bouncing around, but you've seen a lot of volatility. You've seen a lot of intervention by the Federal Reserve and keeping, you know, bond rates, I'd say artificially low, a lot of intervention in, in the market and a lot of forces at work there. And so this average return now over, generally speaking, the last 12 years has been running at a rate lower than what the assumption is. And because that trend has continued, you've seen public sector plans and private continue to lower that investment rate of return because of the, of the volatility that you're seeing there. So, so again, rolling it all the way back up to a high level, the decline in funding level is more folks drawing, changes of, of assumptions. And then, and then a big, big driver has been investment return since 2008. There's been some good years and then there's been some not good years. And even if you look back even further to 2000, since 2000, there's been more volatility since 2000 than there was in the first 40 years, that the, 40, 40 years that the plan was, was ever even accepted. So it's a very, very different time. The city's experience is almost mirrors experience for every other local government across the state and really governments across the United States. You're seeing the same, you know, more conservative type changes coming in because of the investment market. And, and to give you a feel on investment market for this year, I mentioned this obviously plays a critical driver. Last year we ended at about 13.5% to the positive. This year, we all know how the early part of the year started. At the end of March, we were down 12%. April's estimate, we were floating at around negative 19%. And I thought that this would be the worst market return of all time. Started to rethink my life choices for a profession, things along that line. Since that time, obviously there's been a, been a pretty strong rebound. We're down to, at the end of July, we were down one-half percent, which is an amazing rally as we've seen with the, you know, with the, the greater market, unlike anything I think we've, we've ever seen before. Of course, the wild card and what really matters is for pension purposes is this, where is the market at on December 31st, 2020? And I, I could make a lot of reasons why I think it'll continue to be strong and I could make a lot of reasons why I think it may hold or, or decline a little. And I wouldn't bet on any of those options because I do not know. But that will play a critical piece. But this year has been the last 10 years in a, in a very condensed, short microcosm timeframe. And there's been a lot of, there's just continues to be a lot of discussion about this. And again, just to add a little side context, the state of Michigan, I know that we had discussed this last year. The state of Michigan in 2017 under Governor Snyder had passed this, this law protecting local government retirement and, and retiree healthcare act. It's called Public Act 202. And it requires local governments that have pension plans or offers retiree health insurance to tell their story to the state of Michigan Department of Treasury. And Treasury through this act, every year comes out with what they call a set of uniform actuarial assumptions. And they want every entity, including the city, to tell its story, not only based on MERS numbers, but on Treasury's numbers. And so every year the Treasury can change their assumptions and their assumptions are actually, the Treasury state numbers are actually lower than what, or more conservative than even what MERS is and what many other local governments are. So they're moving in that direction too. They've evolved just in the three years that this, this act has been in existence. And they might continue to move in that way as well, out of recognition for, for things that are, that are going on in, in the marketplace. So I'd like to say that this will be the end and I hope this is the end for at least a little while of, of assumptions changing. But I don't know if that's necessarily the case and, and a lot of it just depends on what the experience is like over, over the next couple of years. Sorry, that was a very long-winded answer to, to your question that. Sorry, that was a very long winded answer to, to your question that hopefully shed a little light on what you asked.
Thank you. I have a second question from the actual report on page eight, which is the employer contribution details for fiscal year beginning day one, twenty twenty one. It shows our estimated annual contribution normally at one sixty one and payment of the unfunded accrued liability of thirty thousand. It's really double Jim number. It shows us a two thousand dollars. That, you know, Mike burns you spreading that out a little bit, lower that number over. We can't kick the can out of us and state management and seven hundred dollars. Retirement.
I didn't catch everything you said, Greg. You kind of broke up.
Our age eight of the, our six hundred and ten thousand dollars this year, twenty twenty.
I'm, I'm pulling it up right now. Yeah, so. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're paying, I mean, you, you still broke up, but yeah, we're, we're paying more of our unfunded liability every year.
Can you put that on the screen?
I have to pull it off, hang on, it'll be a minute.
It's page thirteen, Mike. There you go.
Page thirteen, this one?
Yeah, you got it. That's the one, yeah, the real page thirteen.
The bottom line there is pretty ugly.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, remember that's, oh, go ahead, sorry, Mike, I apologize.
That also includes light and power's payment too. But our, I, I've been tracking, uh, based off our ballpark estimates, what our payments are going every year. And we're seeing a forty thousand dollar increase on average every year in additional payments.
Are we seeing that forty thousand because we're not getting the rate of return?
I think that's part of it.
It's, it's part of it. It's part of it along with, again, with the, the aging of the plan, with that, with the, um, you know, a larger number of employees. If, if you have that one there, Mike, the report and go to page twelve, page number twelve at the bottom. It's seventeen in the overall report.
Page seventeen.
Yeah. Table five, um, yeah, two more. Yeah, so again, if you look at over time to the earlier question, if you look at benefit payments in two thousand and nine at four fifty and then look at benefit payments, and again, this is collective between light and power and city, but still, uh, twenty nineteen at double, easily double in, in a, in a ten year timeframe.
We need table five, Mike.
Oh, table five?
Oh, yeah, sorry, what, yeah, one, one page up, there you go.
There you go.
So in, I don't want to minimize that, that investment returns in that timeframe have been challenging. And some years have hit the target and some years have not. So not diminishing that by any means. But again, other, other factors in there, um, in a maturing plan, pretty substantially doubling over the course of a, of a ten year timeframe is pretty significant, um, as, as well. And there's been a lot of evolution with plans, you know, since they were, since they started. But I think one of the key ones that Mike mentioned earlier, and one of the significant changes is that there is this payment timeframe, which at least right now is set at nineteen years. There is the ability to, to extend that, as Mike said. And there's, there's frankly, there's, there's pros and cons associated with that as well. You know, nineteen years, next year will be eighteen, seventeen. So it's like a, it's like a mortgage, if you will. That forces that payment. That's why you see that unfunded liability portion that was referenced in table one earlier going up. And that's that, that forty thousand additional you see, we got to push that up. So that's taking place. But then at the same time, you have some assumption changes, you have experience, you have all these other moving parts. So that can raise the curve or flatten the curve a little bit, depending on what those, what those results are. If the assumption was more conservative or less conservative, experience was better, experience was worse. So it's still a timeframe payment that's fixed, but it gets tweaked and adjusted every single year. That's good because you know that there's a finite end to it. The challenge is, is what Mike mentioned earlier, when you get into the later years, if everything goes as anticipated, those contributions become pretty hefty, in my opinion, in the, in the later years. But there's a finite end date. If you extend it, obviously, it's, you know, refinancing your mortgage over a longer period of time. You're paying it longer, but the potential benefit there is that you get to push that cost curve down. Mike's approach that, that we've talked about quite a bit over, over many months now is, is hitting it from multiple standpoints. You'll see here on this table five, that the city has made some additional contributions to the plan as shown under that additional contribution column. Because we're a maturing plan, money, you know, payments going out, more money has been put in along with the proposed plan amendments or, or changes to the plan provision. So that lowers liabilities on a moving forward basis, potentially closing the plan or closing plan for the police officers. That has an impact on liabilities because there's no new souls coming into the plan. So that's significant. And then if, when those type of actions were taken place, then there would be a new liability set that's very different than these liabilities as shown in this report. Then if we look at extending that out for a period of years, that would lower your monthly payment. You'd still have the flexibility, obviously, to, you know, pay more if you wanted to, but your requirement, you know, hopefully would bring down to a level that is, is manageable from a, from a budget standpoint. So we have not gone down the path of exploring that in detail. But that is a viable option. And there's, there's probably been about a dozen to fifteen local governments across the state that have, have extended that timeframe a little bit, not, you know, not doubling or anything like that. It needed, you know, another four, five, six years in order to, uh, to achieve their target from a, from a budget standpoint year to year.
I just think this, and we are now pay attention to this. Your disclaimer in this all was that this doesn't give COVID. This was back when it's going to spiral potentially health or so. I think just a wake up call for us to be careful with our expectations.
Any other questions for Mike or Mike?
I have one for Michael. From our previous meetings, there's something rattling around in my head that at a certain point, the state of Michigan puts us on a, some kind of list and they start looking over our shoulder. Am I remembering that correctly? And if so, what point is that?
Michigan, was that me or was that, was that me?
I can answer that question. I can answer that question, Cliff. We, we're at that point right now. We, we were under the sixty percent last year. We were able to get a waiver, uh, for the corrective action plan because we are in the process of negotiating our contracts. Next year, I anticipate we will be, we will be, we will be required to file a corrective action plan. And they will, and once we submit that plan, we do have to stick to it. And that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to, through, through all these contracts is we're trying to, to, uh, address those plans.
Right, okay. So sixty percent is what triggers it and we're already on the list.
Well, we will be next year, yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Council, I appreciate it. Thanks, Michael.
Can you, can you put the participant screen back up?
Sure.
All right, uh, item number two, public hearing to talk about the Riverview Flats amendment. Mike, if you want to go over that, then I'll open up the public.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Andy. I'll unmute him.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, uh, the applicants for the Riverview Flats project, as you probably know, have applied for an amendment to their PUD. And I think I saw that Todd is on the line, who can probably provide a brief summary of what the changes are. The changes are significant enough that we basically need to go through the same process that we went through the first time around. So that means city council hearing. Um, and then we'll have to adopt another ordinance, which was provided to you this afternoon, that approved the PUD in its amended format. So just to kind of give you a, a summary of some of the changes that they made, they reoriented this, the street a little bit. It basically just kind of flows from north to south now. If you recall before, it ended up on Monroe Street. So they reoriented the, uh, the driveway a, a little bit to come out on the high street. I know you guys have been working on the high street right of way and some of the laundry issues related to that property over the last several months. So those are also all reflected in the updated plan. So, so tonight, I think the first thing is if the applicant has anything they, they want us to present to you, that would be helpful. And then we will, uh, listen to the public and then we can review the draft ordinance that would approve the project after that, subject to whatever other changes you'd like to make.
Todd should be unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Andy did it, the planning commission did a nice job of summarizing it. As Andy said, um, our revisions were a product of agreement jointly developed with the city a while ago, which allowed us to revisit some things and do come back with a nicer job. Uh, we've been able to add more parking, more landscaping, as Andy said, drop, uh, the driveway that are in a row, which, uh, flows nicer and also eliminates a car headlights shining on the residences across the street, including cliffs, the one in the middle between Cliffs Place and Julian St. John. And, uh, just has allowed us to do a little nicer job. So glad to answer any questions, but Andy covered it very nicely.
All right, now we'll open up the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to comment on it, they can raise their hand. Same as public comment. Nobody?
No.
Marty, this came for planning commission, correct?
Yeah, but I was on vacation, Mike, when that came back to us, so I, there.
Okay. Andy, was there any concerns from the planning commission at that meeting?
No, the planning commission overall, I think, had a favorable opinion of it and so do we. We feel like this is overall an improvement over what was approved a year ago. There were a bunch of concerns, if you recall, last year, mostly with regard to parking, but also there were some concerns over headlights and, and glare and some of that kind of thing. And this plan addresses a lot of that. It provides a fair amount, um, more parking on the, on the property than was there before. You know, they will have to, to update their, their landscaping plan to kind of jive with the new layout a little bit. But overall, there's, I think, twenty two or so more parking spaces than, than were there before on the site. And that's not including all the offsite stuff. So they're still allowed to count some of those surrounding public spaces towards their, their minimum as well. So overall, the impact as far as parking is concerned on the rest of the city would be reduced. And then overall, again, you know, the, the overall, uh, changes to the site layout, landscaping, driveways, all that I think is generally an improvement over the previous plan.
All right, well, there is nobody that has raised their hand. So now we will close the public hearing and we'll look for a motion to approve, I believe, ordinance is twenty dash four. Susie, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty dash four for the site plan amendment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Any other discussion? To?
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sal Sweeto.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yeah, it looks good.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
All right, that's it for that one. Let's go to. Mike, uh, item C is another street closure for Tonya.
Correct. I received a request from Tonya North and North Star Antiques pertaining a street closure of Riverside Drive. If you recall in June, we allowed a street closure of Riverside Drive for her to have a garden sale. She would like to do this event again on Saturday, August eighth, from ten AM to five PM in conjunction with the sidewalk sales the Chamber of Commerce is having. In addition to August eighth, she is also requesting to do this at the same time as before, but on Saturday, September twelfth, twenty twenty, and Saturday, October tenth, twenty twenty. Tonya's here to answer any questions you may have. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the street, street closure dates as presented.
Wasn't, um, Eric asking for a date in September? Did we ever get audio from him?
He did. The only, the only thing is, I mean, if you want to approve it, you can, but we got it yesterday. And normally, we, we'd like them by like Thursday or Friday, um, to put on the agenda. So I talked to the mayor about it, he can handle it any way he wants.
His, uh, we're going to work on Tonya's right now, but his isn't until he has time before the next meeting, right?
Cool.
Mike?
Yeah.
Let me look at his email because I think his date was far enough out. Yeah, September twenty sixth. So, so he can submit it to the next meeting, uh, just maybe a little more time for us to look at it and consider it.
Do you know, excuse me, do you know when they're planning the chill off? The weekend after?
My understanding is it's a, it's the October twelfth date. Or I'm sorry, let me go back. It's the October date, the same date that she's requesting for Riverside Drive.
Yeah, October.
But I also don't think they're, but also not sure they're actually having the event because of.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's always the second Saturday in October, so it'd be the tenth. Anybody have any questions for Tonya? This, how did this go last time as far as traffic and?
It went very well.
There's no complaints for any of the neighboring businesses or residents or anybody?
I did not receive any. I had a lot of people requesting us to do, they really enjoyed it. We had music playing, um, we had the, uh, Mona Ice truck was there. The atmosphere was awesome. The dealers did so well, they wanted to come back, so the people that came. I think I gave you those updates at the last meeting.
All right, any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the street closure plan?
I'll make that motion to prove as presented.
I'll support.
Do you hear me? Motion in a second. Any, yeah, any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedall?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Campfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeVore?
Yes. All right, new business, item A is the Merz delegate, Mike.
It's actually for the MML conference, uh, it was an error. Um, the MML conference, they'll be handling their annual delegate meeting on Tuesday, September ninth at three PM. As you know, the, uh, the, the conference was scheduled to be at Mackinac Island. However, it's been canceled from Mackinac Island due to COVID. Uh, they will be doing a virtual conference from September twenty-ninth, uh, to October second. And, uh, we have the opportunity to participate in the business meeting and if one of the council members wants to serve as the business delegate.
Yeah, I think that's been me the last three or four conferences and I've been in contact with Brenda and I plan on attending most of it. So I'd be happy to do it again unless somebody else wants to do it.
Mayor DeVore, were you not thinking about getting on and being an active member to their board?
Yeah, I've submitted a letter of interest to their actual board. Um, and then I've submitted a couple of new things to get from level two to level three in the MML. Uh, it's all, I mean, it's all on hold now. There's only so many credits you can get via webinar, so until there's some in-person stuff that goes on again, I'm kind of in a holding pattern there too. So, yeah, I have submitted all the, all the stuff I needed to.
So you're willing to do this again?
Yeah. Yep, unless somebody else wants to try it, I'd be happy to do it again.
I'm good with that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Susie, you can take care of that for me, right?
Sure can, yep.
Cool, all right. Uh, item B then is the marijuana ordinance hours of operation, Mike.
Yes, uh, section twenty-eight dash thirty subsection three of our adult use marijuana ordinance states, "It shall be unlawful for any licensee to sell marijuana or marijuana products at a licensed marijuana retailer or micro business business at any time other than between the hours of seven AM and nine PM daily." Meds Cafe has made a request to modify a provision of the ordinance. They are seeing an unintended issue occur with it, with their business due to this. Meds Cafe closes as required at nine PM, however, they cannot process sales after nine PM. So people who are arriving fifteen, twenty minutes prior to closing are in a position where the clerks may have to turn them away. The owners have had dozens of complaints and requests when they've had late arriving customers and turning them away, and this has caused them lost revenue by not being able to serve all of their customers. Meds Cafe informs me, a normal transaction takes five to fifteen minutes as they have to track the sale with the state. This is also dependent on the customer's questions and size of their, and the size of their order to be filled. Meds Cafe is requesting they still close at nine PM, however, they be allowed to operate no later than ten PM to process those transactions. From my discussions with Meds Cafe, I believe this is a reasonable request and was an oversight when we developed the ordinance. We would need to come back at a later date to modify the ordinance, but I would have no issue modifying it to accommodate this. I would recommend the city council consider modifying ordinance section twenty-eight dash thirty subsection three of our adult use marijuana ordinance to allow for marijuana establishments to close for business at nine PM, but remain no, open no later than ten PM to process transactions. Just a little bit of more, um, to this, um, I did have an opportunity today to tour their facility and they walked me through a sale. And, uh, I can tell you, this is not like going to the grocery store and ringing stuff up. There's a lot of, there's a lot of documentation that they have to have in order for the sale to happen. Um, the biggest thing for them is every product, every product they have is tracked with a state. There's a specific number. And they have to be able to verify that the number they enter and the num, the number matches what comes up on their computer, that that's the correct product. And I walked, he walked me through it. It's, it's, it's a tedious process and they have to go through every day to make sure every sale is correct, otherwise they run the risk of losing their license with the state. So this is very, this, this is a, I think this is a legitimate request. They don't think they'll actually ever be open past nine-thirty to process these claims, but by allowing them to be able to work from nine to ten while this, but not have any more sales, I, I don't see an issue with this. Um, I do have Casey Cole, he's the operations manager for Meds Cafe. He's here tonight. He can answer any questions you may have.
Absolutely, I'd love to.
Marty? Okay, so on planning commission, we talked large, long and hard about this open and closed time. And it came down to, we knew where the spaces were and we also knew that residential was going to be impacted by it. The thought process behind it was to eliminate past nine o'clock to allow the neighborhoods to get less traffic, less light, less noise, all of that. The last two that came to us and applied had no problems of abiding by the open and closed times. They were grateful for it and I just think if we do this now, uh, it goes from nine, they're gonna come, you know, it'll go to ten, where does it end? You know what I mean? Um, we did it more for the neighborhoods because a lot of them are buttoned up to residential. And that was, that's the conclusion we came to on planning.
How late is the Taco Bell open?
Two.
Okay.
Two, one on the weekdays, two on the weekends.
I knew it was late. I didn't know it was that late.
Oh, yes.
My, my, my concern on the thing is, um, is, is educating your customers. I mean, I don't know if you have a lot of repeat business or it's the same, or you got new people showing up at eight-thirty quarter of an appointment. So I don't know if that's how you do it through education. Here it is, guys. I mean, we have to get in and out of here, so I'm not sure what you guys are doing to educate your, your customers that here it is.
Yeah, so we do, uh, we do let everybody know that we, our close time is nine o'clock. Um, we still, every day, we still get at least a couple hundred new customers. We go through between five hundred and eight hundred transactions a day, so that's five hundred to eight hundred cars a day. A lot of them are new people, um, people still hearing about us, people locally, people from Hallandale are driving over. And a lot of those people just haven't, they don't know, you know, the process, how long it's gonna take. A lot of it's, we have a lot of first timers, so it does take a little bit of time. It's tough to let everybody know. Um, we do, we've been offering discounts to the people that come that are upset. Um, so then they'll come back the next day, then they know, but of course, they're still, they're still pretty upset about it. But, um, but yeah, we get a lot of, a lot of new, uh, customers every day.
Are you talking about just doing this while you're limited to curbside? Or are you looking for the ordinance to change going forward?
Um, honestly, I would, uh, it's just for curbside. Once, once they're in the store, we can, we can cut off the line. We'll know how long it's gonna take just for, uh, for a curbside, there's just, it's, uh, it's busy. It's busy all the time. Um, a lot of the cars, like Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, we'll, uh, we'll have ten, fifteen cars out there that'll show up at eight-thirty. And just to be able to make sure everybody gets it, because that thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth car, we may, we may not be able to get to in time, but they've been sitting there for twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Casey? Just so I understand what you're saying is if a customer drives in at two minutes to nine.
Yeah, I'm next.
You'll, you want to be able to sell to that person, but it could take you up to till nine-thirty to process the paperwork or whatever it is you have to process. Is that, Mike?
Yeah, that's basically it. It does take, um, because that person might have, you know, they, uh, their, their parents might need something. They want some opinions on it, and so that could take us five minutes just to explain it to them. And then we're at nine oh three and we can't do anything beyond that point.
Well, I have a retail business myself and when somebody comes in at five minutes to six, even though I close at six o'clock, if they're, they're buying something, I sure don't kick them out the door.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
Very close, close.
Yep.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Casey? Does anybody want to make a motion to modify the ordinance twenty-eight dash thirty? Subsection three, nine to ten, just, I mean, we have to come back, Mike, and redo it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we would have to formally approve the ordinance at a later date. I would ask for direct, for direction at this time to come back or not to come back.
All right. So have Mike edit it and then bring it back and vote on it, or what do you guys want to do? I'm just, if we do it now, do we have to redo it when curbside's over to put it back?
Or you, or you just allow it. I mean, you just, you just allow that as your ordinance. It's, it's up to you.
But the whole design of the ordinance was to not allow it. Past nine, wouldn't, I mean, would be the, I don't. I'm just, I'm concerned that we're gonna keep doing this and then it's ten and then it's eleven and then it's...
I, I understand that concern as well. And that was something that I, when I started researching, when I started looking at this, that was my first question.
The planning commission designed it this way for a reason. You know, is, would it just be easier to limit the curbside sales to eight-thirty? And that would give you time. I don't know.
Yeah, it's just, uh, then any people that we would have had between, you know, eight-thirty and nine, if there's no customers, then we lose an entire half hour of business.
Marty? We, we did this knowing that we needed to be uniformed and consistent, um, across the board with, with, you know, everybody involved and we knew that there was gonna be churches there. We knew a lot of different things, so, you know. It just, that was a, that was a time that, that we felt comfortable with and, uh, I know they were there for that initial meeting. Um, and at that time too, they were comfortable with it, so. If it's gotta change, then how that changes, I don't know, but I, we spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
I think it's a, the curbside only problem. I don't think it's a problem for a normal operation, so I don't know that I feel comfortable changing a whole ordinance that the planning commission and Jessica worked on for, or, you know. Mike, can you unmute Jessica in case she's here?
Charlie, find her. Okay, Jess, guys, you unmute, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my fault for asking to be muted earlier. Um, so, right, you don't have the ordinance amendment in front of you now, just to be clear. And so this whole discussion is something that would have to take place again at some point if Mike came back to you with an ordinance amendment. So, um, again, tonight, the only guidance would be, or the only vote would be, if any, whether Mike should, should draft something for your consideration and how you want that to look, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want, I mean, is there consensus for Mike to redo this? Or are we content to leave the ordinance as it's written and make it uniform for everybody?
I'm content on leaving it as it is. We got hours into it. There's lots of discussion, so I'm good with how it is.
I think too, there's an only a limited number of places you can get these products. I would imagine it only takes you showing up at eight-fifty-one time before you start coming at eight-fifteen, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's more an education thing. I'd hate to step on the toes of the planning commission and Andy and Jessica and everybody and change an entire ordinance, because I don't think this curbside thing is a permanent, permanent problem. But that's just my opinion. Greg, Jim, Cliff?
My problem is you, you gotta, if the idea was to protect the residents from lights, we gotta drive through open till two AM. No, I'm not, I don't get it, but it's probably not worth redoing the ordinance for.
I'm, I'm not opposed to seeing something and writing it and how that would look. Uh, we can vote on that later. Mike, how much time do you feel you're gonna be spending doing this versus doing other things that are probably more not critical to the city, but things that you need to get done?
I mean, this is something that Jessica would draft and I would review. Maybe hour or two at the most.
The only, the only change being requested is, is the hours, right? So it would be a forward amendment, yeah.
Yeah, maybe an hour or two at the most.
Yeah.
Great.
I think it could be stop hating their customers a little bit better. It, it is tough with Taco Bell being open two or three hours later. Um, but I don't know how, it's, it's almost spot zoning if you allow one business to do it and then next application, there must be a drag. This is gonna be a changing market. There will be competitors. But, um, I, I think that the planning commission did this to protect the neighbors. I'm probably okay with leaving it as.
Okay. So to be clear, there is no consensus on having the ordinance drafted and brought to us, correct?
Correct.
All right, all right. Anything else, Mike, on that?
Nope.
All right, let's go to item C, the Lowell Arts yarn bombing.
In twenty, in twenty thirteen, Lowell Arts approached the city council to allow a yarn bombing of the downtown. This is where volunteer artisans create art projects out of yarn on trees in the downtown district. It is supposed to be a way to provide color on the, to the downtown with lively knitted and crocheted wraps. It is, it was unknown what day this will occur as it's gonna be a secret. Lorraine's gonna kind of expla, it's kind of changed a little bit since we've talked, since I put this memo together on Friday.
So.
I've attached some photos and, and flyers explaining this further. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the Lowell Arts request to hold a yard bombing, and Lorraine's there if you have questions.
I can, I can explain how this works. Um, I just, the sale today, photographing the tree between Main Street and, uh, the honey, and there are forty trees that are all city-owned trees. And, um, the idea is that people adapt a tree and they create a...
Hello?
Can we lose her? Nope, she's muted. Mike, she's muted.
Let me unmute her.
In the meantime, does everybody remember the one?
I do.
Yep.
It was neat.
Lorraine, if you can hear me, I did, I asked you to unmute, so you just would.
Oh, there she is.
There she is, okay.
Okay, can you hear me now? Sorry about that. So we did this back in two thousand thirteen and it was absolutely fucking beef. And what we're trying to do is really have things to uplift our community and just make people happy. Um, so I originally proposed this, Mike. I had said that we would, uh, we would bomb the tree Waldberg, um, week, which is September nineteenth. But now I really think that's brilliant, because artisans are gonna need more time to create their creations. So now I'm proposing that it happens right before harvest celebration weekend, the second weekend of October. And then they stay up for a month, a month and a half. And then they stay up for a month, a month and a half and then they're taken. So potentially up through Thanksgiving, even just to kind of create a new quarter in downtown. Um, I don't know how many of you need to understand what yarn bombing people do is they adopt a tree and they create a wrap for the tree. Sometimes it's a trunk, sometimes it's a branch. Yeah, um, and this eight and um, where everybody comes down their tree. It's kind of like this fun little art event that happens. So Cliff, I've seen you and I, it was really I thought it was great. So um, because it's all city trees that we would have for creations around, I just feel like I need the city council to give us approval to go forward with this art event.
I made a motion that we allow yarn bombing to occur whenever it works.
I'll support that.
Any other discussion or questions before Lorraine? Sue?
And I would, I would tell all of you, just Google, Google yarn bombing and you'll see some awesome pictures of other communities that have done it. It's pretty, it's pretty fun.
I just, I just had one question. How long do they stay on the trees? Thirty days, fifty days?
Well, you're, no, it stays up for a while. Um, when we did it back in 2013, it up for about six weeks. And then we asked all of them to remove their creations at that point. Or if they did not, then I.
So they took it up Christmas through Lowell time or down, they would take, depends on when they get them up, Cliff?
No, that's true.
Yeah, if they're talking September, whatever, then you might be into that, but I'm all right. I, I'm good with it. I just didn't want them up during the Christmas holiday season.
All right, anything else? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeVor.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Lorraine. Board and commission reports, Jim?
Uh, I have none.
Greg?
No.
Marty?
I was on vacation.
Cliff?
Nobody met.
All right, me neither. Mike, city managers report.
Yes, um, couple of items. First one, the paving is complete on Suffolk, Elizabeth, Howard and Riverside. Uh, they'll come back and do some restoration work. We're still, we're still going through all the numbers. I do believe this project did come in under budget. Uh, once I can confirm that, I will let you know. Just a reminder, the showboat meeting uh, with the committee will be next Tuesday, August 11th at 7:00 PM at Creekside Park. Um, I know I've sent you some information today on that. The CARES Act funding, um, I did last week, or no, two weeks ago. Uh, no, I'm sorry, beginning of last week, I submitted the hazard pay request to the state of Michigan. And um, also there's another program that we are, that we are eligible for that I submitted on. And what it, what it is, is um, under the CARES Act, under the state of Michigan approved portion of the CARES Act, they are, they are reimbursing payroll costs for public health and public safety expenses as of right now for the months of April and May. I've submitted a request for all of our, for our police department payroll costs to be reimbursed by the federal government, sorry, by the state of Michigan through the CARES Act and it's equivalent of about $92,000. Um, so I've submitted that request and uh, it's first come, first served and we had until uh, August 7th to get the money, uh, get the applications in. So I feel that we probably will get reimbursed for that. Also, uh, we are um, starting our process with the USDA rural development pertaining to financing for the proposed Monroe and Washington projects in 2022 and 2023. Um, I've, I have a meeting with you, uh, USDA in uh, mid-August um, to discuss that. Also, at your next meeting, you will be getting um, a proposal for engineering for Amity. Um, as you recall, we received $250,000 from uh, from the United States Community Development Block Grant Program. So we're working on that as well for next uh, next summer. Um, also, I'm also reviewing our street funds. I'm looking to see if it's possible to possibly repay a, a street or two on the Valley Vista subdivision next year in addition to Amity. Um, I will be meeting with the financial advisor pertaining to what we discussed last council meeting pertaining to Lowell Township next week. Also, uh, the police department did fill their police position, their full-time police position. One of our part-time officers, Officer Jason Diaz was uh, was hired. He will start August 10th. He worked part-time here for quite a period of time, um, for about two and a half years. He also worked full-time for the Muskegon Heights Police Department. So it'll be a major change of pace for him and I'm looking forward to him coming back. Also, next week, um, the uh, police department will be holding their, their first phase of the sergeant exams. So there'll be interviews and then later, at a later date, there'll be practical exams as well. Um, and that's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mike? All right, nothing new on appointments, Susie, right?
No, nothing new.
All right, council comments, Cliff?
I'd like to welcome the T Meyer family back to the Lowell area. They didn't move into the city, but I'll forgive them for that. Would be my daughter, son-in-law and two grandkids.
Awesome.
Jim?
I, I'm good, thank you.
Greg?
Um, I'm a little disappointed that we are hiring full-time employees when a couple of months ago we could get by without them. Um, the uh, tough times are coming. We're spending money we don't have and we're going to be bankrupt pretty soon, but let's keep spending money.
Um, I'd like to respond to that. Um, these, these two positions were budgeted at the beginning of this year. The position that we hired last time, we talked about it at the budget session and there was no issues with hiring the position. The council was informed that if that occurred, if we didn't hire that position, then we would not be able to have front desk coverage at the police department. And nobody in the council at the time said anything about that. So to say that we're wasting money, I take offense to that. I am very diligent of our money and I take, I take, I take it very seriously how we spend money and to be called reckless, I am offended by that. Thank you.
I didn't say reckless. The budget meetings were for the statement that we could opt with 80% instead of, but we can agree to disagree.
Marty?
I have nothing.
All right, me neither. Jim?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 37:00 PM.
I'll support.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Propose for adjourn.